All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the board of trustees of the East Central Independent School District being held on May 19th, 2022, beginning at 6:00 PM at the Patterson Center for Performing Arts. Madam Secretary, can I have a row ball?
Yes, sir. Del Corzal, Ginger Friesenhoff, Victor Garza, Coach Mochi, Monique Presses. Mr. President, we inform.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We'll move on to prayer and pledge. Mr. Toscano will be happy tonight.
I'd like to call Mr. McCann to the podium to lead us in prayer and pledge and a few other things. Mr. McCann?
Well, good evening, Mr. Massengill, members of Toscano, members of the board, honored guests, families in print. We want to welcome you to East Central High School and the Gary Patterson Center for the Performing Arts. It's a special evening where we get the opportunity to recognize our dedicated staff for their committed service to our students in East Central. At this time, I would like to call to the podium our JRTC Horned Cattie Cadet Major Kiana Johnson for the posting of the colors, the prayer, and the pledges. Major Johnson, mic is yours.
Ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise and remain standing for the presentation of the papers by the East Central JRTC Color Guard with the Directional Cadet Command Sergeant, Sergeant Somlingo. Please remain standing for the prayers and the pledge. Guarding the American flag is Cadet Sergeant First Class Joshua Lee White. Carrying the American flag is Cadet Captain Roger Caballero. Carrying the Texas flag is Cadet Sergeant First Class Jacqueline Harvey Staley. Guarding the Texas flag is Cadet Corporal Jose Ochoa.
Order, face.
Please fire your heads and close your eyes. Dear Heavenly Father, I pray for these men and women here today. Please make us ready and attentive to hear you. Lord, we thank you. Thank you for guiding us and giving us the ability to rise each day, knowing that you're walking alongside us wherever your planes call for us to be. I pray we all seek to grow in knowledge and our faith in you and continue to guide our educators. I hope that they leave their fears behind and trust in the Holy Heart. In Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Order, face. Forward, march. Left, left, up, right. Left, 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 right. Up, forward, halt. Enter, face. Ready, step. Present, march. Order, march. Forward, march. Left, 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 right. Left, 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 right. Left, 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 right. Left, left. Forward, march. Left, 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 right. Left, 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 right. Left, 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 right. Left, 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 right.
Thank you, may be seated. Thank you to our JRTC Color Guard for the posting of the colors. At this time, I just want to take a few minutes just to recognize a few of our exceptional student groups who are outside in the lobby or inside the auditorium that were receiving our guests as they arrived. It's been a great year for the Hornets, and this is just a small example of the exceptional talent that we have at ECIC. So students, when I call your group, if you could just please wave when I call you out. First, I'd like to thank our East Central Mediaci Club, who performed for us at the beginning and the start, so we give them a round of applause. Thank you, guys. So we're excited to announce that next year, we're actually offering our first Mediaci class that will be a part of our suite of performing arts classes that students will have, and so we're really excited about that program taking off. Additionally, you heard a student playing on the piano, Gavin Kinnamore. He is a 10th grader. Great job, Gavin. We appreciate it. You may now move on. We're also offering a community class now here at East Central, which is another one of our fine arts credits that students can earn, and he's a part of those classes. Additionally, you heard Marissa Mehea, who was singing. She's our first vocalist in East Central history. She's our first vocalist to ever make the All-State Mixed Cryo, so we're incredibly proud of her. She was accompanied by our actually number-one ranking sumo for the class of 2022, Jamin Hoffman. So great job, Jamin. That's how we put up the vote together. He is going to be attending West Point in the fall, so congratulations, Jamin, on that.
Four.
Yeah, there you go. Outside, we're warmly greeted by our East Central Color Guard. So for Color Guard, if you guys could wave right now just so they know where you guys are. This year, the Jamin and Marston both qualified for the state championships in March, and for the first time in the history of this program, they both took away a silver medal in their respective divisions. Our Color Guard students have been proudly wearing their medals to show off their hard work, so we're incredibly proud of you. Great job this year, guys. Thank you. So we've got a number of other events. You did notice there is an art fair that's going on out there. We actually have 10 artists at the high school with 11 pieces of art that advance to the State Visual Arts Coliseum event, which is right now continuing on with our 26 years of that tradition. And four of those students receive state medals. They're not here because they've got another event going on, and we're going to move on. Gabriella, where are you at, Gabriella? So Gabriella, she just waved. She's a senior in our fashion design, and she took first place the last two years in a row in the University of the Encarnate Work Red Dress Competition. She competed against over 100 schools from across the state and has won first place the last two years, so congratulations. She will be a senior student in culinary work, and she will major in fashion design and apparel production. Moving on with there, our advanced practicum culinary students, they were out there with their cakes, and you got a chance to notice them. They've been tirelessly working with the perfect skills, like the much of cake decorating, and this year in the Skills USA Culinary Cake Competition, they took home four first places, two second places, and one third place. So thank you very much, and those cookies that are in front of you were made by those same students that are standing right over there, so thank you, Lord. Thank you, guys. Great job. Our audiovisual technical students, they created a documentary called From the Working with the Pink Berets. Where are you guys at? I know there's a large group that's there. It's directed by George Fred, George Newangos, David T. U. They submitted their work to a Bear Fest, which is like the Oscars for high schools in video production. And East Central High School took the grand prize for the best overall portfolio, and so that is a really, really big deal if you weren't aware of that. Diego Belmaras won the best graphic design. Diego, wave. Do you recognize? And that's the record that George Fred also awarded a $15,000 scholarship. So additionally, they were featured on WAI San Antonio's Living just a few weeks ago. The excellence continues. If I can get our Raider team just to stand really quick. So they also are in here providing a little bit of hype for the group and clapping to get everybody going. Our JRTC Raider team competes in seven Raider competitions throughout the year, which you may not know is these include the Army Physical Fitness Test, which is a 10-kilometer foot march with equipment. They have to complete an obstacle course known as the Raider Gauntlet. They have land navigation exercises that are timed. They have casualty evacuation and a rope bridge competition. If that doesn't sound exhausting enough, these Raiders then must pull, push, carry, or drag weighted equipment for five kilometers. So this year, they took home an astonishing five first-place finishes, one second, and one third, which culminated in their version of their state competition in La Popa, where they placed first overall as a co-head team, which by the way, a mixture of boys and girls, and they beat out the all-male team from Reagan High School to set a new course record by almost 100. So at this time, if any of the parents of these students are in the audience, would you mind just also standing and being recognized? You definitely deserve this goal, so make sure you do it as well. If there are any of the parents in the audience, also please stand and wave. Thank you, students, and thank you, students. So board members just in front of you, you'll see there's a cookie made, like I said, by our culinary arts students. You also have a yard sign that was made by our ag mechanic students, and then there's a bag of assorted goodies from East Central High School. We just want to thank you for your continued support. Mr. Massengill, members of the board, continuously in the ways that you provide us all the things that we need in order for these great students to excel. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate that. We'll move on to why we're all here, to recognize our outstanding admin and people that have been here. So we'll move on to the awards and recognition. Mr. Toscano?
Yes, sir, Mr. Massengill, trustees. Tonight, we're very pleased to be able to recognize almost 170 employees who have anywhere from five years of service to the district, to as many as 45 years of service. In addition to that, there are 24 colleagues among us who are going to retire and move on to the next season in their life. All in all, the gratitude that we have for the service that they have provided to students in this community, we can't say thank you enough. These folks are so talented that they could have chose to be anywhere, but yet they've chosen this community and this school district, and so we're forever grateful for their contributions, for those that are continuing in their service. We're blessed to continue to have you, and tonight is just a small way to say thank you for your years of service, and we can't wait in five-year increments until your retirement to continue to recognize you. So with that, we turn it over to Ms. Coles.
Thank you, Mr. Toscano. Good evening. Good evening, President Massengill, members of the board and service award and retire recipients. Thank you so much for being here this evening. And your families, thank you for coming. We are very grateful for y'all attending this very special evening we have tonight. We are excited to be recognizing y'all, and we are glad that you could be here. We are very grateful for your service, as Mr. Toscano said, and we are excited to celebrate the 1,890 years of service that you've dedicated to this district. Like every employee in our district, you were hired with great expectations and are being recognized tonight because you embody the values of East Central. Our honoraries have proven to be loyal, adaptable, persistent, collaborative team players, and people who accept personal responsibility, provide exceptional customer service, and are fiscally responsible. Some may have come to us with a burning desire to change the world forever, or just grateful to have a job, but one thing is certain, whether they have been here five years or 45 years, in the beginning stages of their careers or the end, these people are being recognized because they've become a part of the most valuable asset that East Central ISB has, and that's our EC family. The first group that we will recognize tonight are our five-year service award recipients. If our five-year award recipients would please make their way to the left, and remember that your card is on the visual, and will make your way this way. What we will do is you will collect your award from this camper and this fire, and then you'll hand me your card, and you'll walk across the stage, and you'll stop in the middle, you'll collect your award, and take a picture. Then you will go out for your group picture. There, out on the stairs. Amanda Riones. Elizabeth McLean. Robin Vincent. Rodney Vio. Joyce Oliver. Yvette Lopez. Christina Mercer. Leslie Clay Jr. Nick Galick Jr. Vanessa Brown. Maria Gould. Whitney Woodell. Sarah Ramos. Laura Reinwald. Marybel Arias. Kimberly Robinson. Maria Del Carmen Rodriguez Cabrera. Andrew Gatlin. Jeremy Flores. Rudy Fuentes Jr. George Longoria. Amanda Peralas. Officer Monae Hale. Iris Martinez. Sergeant Major, the legend, Frank Leoni. Our group of five-year award recipients included a total of nine EC family members that contributed 450 years of service. We always want to recognize our family and friends of our honoraries because we know the kind of commitment and sacrifice it takes to serve as an educator, and there is no way to be successful without the understanding and support of our family and friends. At this time, all the family and friends of our five-year honoraries, please stand and be recognized. Thank you, guys. If our 10-year honoraries would please make their way to the left, or I'm sorry, my right, my right, and line up. Our group of 10-year award recipients includes 35 EC family members who have contributed a total of 350 years of service to East Central. Lisa Chandler. Now I have to tell the 10-year service recipients, you'll make your way out to go to the stairs to take a picture. Veronica Carrera. Glorimar Martinez Cardona. Monica Johnson. Deborah Gobord. Nicole Renee Cowan. Lauren Reeves. Celeste Ramos. Annalisa Salinas. Melita Ogden. Shannon Fuller. At this time, will the family and friends of our 10-year honoraries please stand and be recognized? If our 15-year honoraries would please make their way to the left and line up. Our group of 15-year award recipients includes 22 EC family members who have contributed a total of 330 years of service to the district. And 15-year honoraries, when y'all are done with your individual pictures, if y'all would please make your way out to the stairs to take your group picture. Melissa Barnett Kochen. Patricia Merlos. Tamara Drazmala. Monica Valenzuela. Edwin Champagne. Laura Mahado. Megan Page. Sherry Nelly. Latrina Young Prince. Kristy Luis. Heidi Strosik. Mary Alice Gomez. At this time, will the family and friends of our 15-year honoraries please stand and be recognized? Thank you. If our 20-year honoraries would please make their way to the left and line up. Our group of 20-year award recipients includes 12 EC family members who have contributed a total of 240 years of service. Congratulations. Sonia Tomso. Vanessa Gutierrez. Frances Konzer. Karen Copack. Tracy Butler. David Jansen. At this time, will the family and friends of our 20-year honoraries please stand and be recognized? If our 25-year honoraries would please make their way to the left and line up. Our group of 25-year award recipients includes nine EC family members that have contributed Our group of 25-year award recipients includes nine East Central family members who have contributed a total of 225 years of service. Nicole Gallic. Teresa Anne Gilon. Linda Ann Deason. Julio Alonso. Superintendent Roland Toscano. Ashley Colis. Will the family and friends of the 25-year recipients please stand and be recognized? Lastly tonight, we have one honoree, oh wait, um, I'm sorry. If you are one of our 35-year honorees, would you please make your way to the left and line up? Thirty, thirty, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're 30 out of your honorees, come on over. We have six East Central family members who have contributed a total of 180 years of service. To East Central, I'm so sorry. I walked away and lost my smile. Michelle Winkler. Candy Pauselberg. Lori Kempin. Chief George Trunowski. Stephanie Semain. At this time, will the family and friends of our 30-year honorees please stand and be recognized? Now, our 35-year honorees would please make their way to the left and line up. We only have two. Two East Central family members who have contributed a total of 70 years of service to the East Central. Suzie Havens. Pamela Delicio Wilson. At this time, will the family and friends of our 35-year honorees please stand and be recognized? Lastly tonight, we have one 45-year honoree, and that is Mr. David Sipper. Mr. Sipper, would you please make your way forward to be recognized? David Sipper. At this time, will the family and friends of our 45-year honorees, Mr. Sipper, please stand and be recognized? On behalf of East Central, I want to thank you to everyone who has been recognized tonight. We have more, but wait, there's none. Next, let's please to recognize a very special group of people, and that's our retirees at age 24. Our retirees have contributed a combined total of 419 years of service to the East Central community and a total of 525 years of service in public education. On behalf of the school board, the superintendent, and our community, thank you for your commitment and dedication. Thank you for the countless hours spent in preparing, supporting, motivating, and guiding our students. You were the catalyst for so many young people achieving their dreams. It is said that a good teacher is a brilliant light illuminating the prism of life revealing to students a rainbow of possibilities. Your retirement is a celebration not just for all the years that you put into education, but for every child that you've helped along the way and the knowledge that you imparted. It's for the patience and dedication that you made a difference in the lives of others. You have, without a question, had an impact on the students and this community. I certainly realize that not all retirees were classroom teachers. Whether teacher was your official title or not, you were a critical element in the education of our children. The kids learn by watching, and they learn far more than reading, writing, and math from the people that they encounter at school. Students learn compassion and strength and dedication by watching the examples set for them by people like Leanna O'Leary and Ramona Salismar, who served for many years as library assistant or AP secretary at East Central High School. They learn about kindness and a strong work ethic by watching Julio Alonso work hard every day keeping facilities maintained across the district. And they learn something really important by watching Linda Deason, longtime PD paraprofessional at Salado, they learn how to have fun and be healthy. Retirees, you've touched the lives of so many across the district, always encouraging and challenging us to strive for excellence. You've shaped and molded the future by inspiring our students. Who are tomorrow's leaders? You are leaving a lasting legacy. As we recognize our retirees, I'm certain that many of us will be flooded with great memories like the ones that I have of sharing a classroom with Damon. Sorry. Trainer, you're at East Central. Back at the turn of the century, y'all, when high school was old and Damon and I were young, when we were the mom and dads of pal kids, our pals, his own three kids were all in car seats, and I think now two of the career graduated from college, I think the baby is a senior at AAM. Right? There will be people recognized tonight who made the impact on you as they served this community for so long in so many different ways. And I encourage you to reach out and share with our retirees your memories and the things that you appreciate about them as they close this chapter in their lives and begin a new one. To our retirees, it is time to celebrate you and all the time and dedication and hard work that led to this joyous occasion. Whether East Central was your last stop in a long career or home for many years, the East Central community is better for having kind of relationship, service, and friendship. So at this time, I'll call all of our retirees up individually. Terry Adams. Julio Alonso. Leopoldo Alvarado. Shannon Blandford. Shirley Brauner. Tracy Butler. Bernadette Castillo. Margaret Carnejo. Darlene Delagarza. Linda Ann Deason. Pamela Delicio Wilson. Francis Exum. Linda Flores. Cecilia Garza. Sylvia Gomez. Mary Mallett. Leanna O'Leary. Sandra Padlaki. Yvonne Pacheco. Skintin Rochester. Mo Rodriguez. Ramona Salazar. Stephanie Semeen. Damon Trainer. Will all of our retirees, family, and friends please stand to be recognized? Thank you for sharing your happiness with us for so many years. And our good wishes to our retirees. May this new chapter of your life be filled with wonderful surprises, and we wish you all the best in retirement. We have two more groups to recognize, and Mr. McKay as the first group.
All right, can either Electrathon team go ahead and make their way up to the stage? Guys, more metal, more fire, push in one of the cars so you can see one of the electric cars they built. You guys make your way on up. You know, he's got a lot of heart for me, so I'll give him a few things as you're on your way up. So last month, the East Central High School Electrathon team took three cars to the Emerald Coast Electrathon race at Five Flag Speedway in Pensacola, Florida. That's a national competition. Tin Van drove one of our cars, it was the original car, Hornet One, and he took third place in the high school division. Enrique Carrion drove Plan B, and they placed second in the high school division. And, uh, let's see, and Luis Perez drove her newest car, Stinger, and they took first place in the high school division as well as third place overall, which also beat out many, many adult male teams that they competed against. So the drivers, though, they only take up partial credit as they were aided and instructed by their respective data teams and pit crews. The Hornet pit crew consists of Abraham Lopez, Adrian Torres, Justine Favela, Enzahaiden, Elias, Plan B. The crew consists of Nathan Escobell, Tyler Ledford, Edzel Tescañio, Eduardo Diaz, and Hermione Zapata. The Stinger pit crew consists of Bruce Moore, Luis Sefiano Baccion, Noah De洛 Santos, and Cyrus Lewis. These kids have spent the past year rebuilding the existing cars and completely starting fresh with a new build. They have also taken a completely different method of battery management and data collection, which has taken months of practice, many headaches, but it all came to fruition in Pensacola where they took the first place overall. Very proud of these guys. We have to thank the sponsors, Mr. Charles Hoffu, who is 15 here tonight, so is celebrating his daughter's little recital, Mr. Charles Hoffu, for their dedicated service and the long hours that they put in. In addition, I don't want to forget that Mr. John Massengill for his continued support of the program. We just want to say great job to our team, we're very proud of you. If there are any family members and or friends that are in the audience, could you also stand, please, and be recognized? And we just want to say thank you for your support, sharing some of your achievements. Great job.
If I can have our East Central School Foundation board members, please make their way in. Retirees, if y'all could take your plaques and go stand outside on the stairs for a group picture would be greatly appreciated. All retirees, we don't go out for a group picture, please. Established in 1926, the East Central School Foundation, a nonprofit organization that to date has raised a total of $2,831,828 to foster, promote, and encourage public education programs in East Central Independent School District. Its mission is to develop and expand educational opportunities for students by providing financial support and community involvement. You probably know the foundation best by their annual gala fundraiser and popular teacher mini-grants. The foundation's activities are overseen by the Hornet Directors, who represent a cross-section of the business, corporate, and educational communities who have experience and leadership in civic, business, and educational affairs. We are blessed to have an exceptional Board of Directors currently leading the foundation, and it is our distinct honor to recognize them tonight. So, first, we have Shannon Albert from Community, who's a community volunteer. Beth Fisk, and Beth Alonso from Cross Bay. Carlos Constantino from LPA Eak. Mary Beth Fisk from the AccuMedical Center. Robin Massengill from Massengill Armature Works. We need to get all back out for a group picture. Y'all will all come back out for a group picture, and then I just want to recognize the people who couldn't be here with us tonight. Lori Lamascus, who's also a community volunteer, Joe Ritterhouse from Ritterhouse and Associates, and Gretchen Steckey from Hope Cat. Despite being very busy executives, these foundation directors spend countless hours volunteering not only their time, but their skills, their network, and their resources as well. Their tireless efforts to support the teachers and students of East Central is commendable. Please help me congratulate them on raising the most money ever at this year's foundation gala. The total was over $100,000, $100,109.14. Congratulations and thank you for all your hard work. Thank y'all so much. That concludes awards and recognitions. Thank you so much for being here tonight. To all of our service award recipients and retirees, and to our foundation board members.
Thank you, I'll say with that, we'll take
Thank you, I think with that, we'll take a short five to seven-minute break, alright? Thank you. Alright, I'm going to reconvene and move on to number five, public comments. Do we have any public comments? No? Alright, thank you. We will move on to superintendent's report, 6.1 Personnel Report, Mrs. Scott.
Mr. President, trustees, there's no activity in this month's personnel report.
Alright, that means 6.2 Alamo College District Presentation, Mr. Scott.
Sir, trustees, I'd like to at this time call our friends from Alamo Colleges up to the podium to present the board with some information about our relationship as it relates to student outcomes and cost savings for our students. And I believe they've got a plaque to, to present to the board as well.
Good evening, members, make sure it's on. Good evening, Board President, Massengill, members of the board, Superintendent Tiscano, and East Central Community. My name is Gilbert Becerra, I'm the Vice President of Student Success for Palatol College, and on behalf of our Chancellor, Dr. Mike Flores, we are honored to be here tonight. I'm joined also by our colleagues from our district support office, by our Chief High School Programs Officer, Samantha Gallegos, who's standing right here next to me. Also, our Team Lead for Recruitment, Gana Frausto, who oversees the recruitment of students into the Alamo Promise Program, as well as Benedico Cortez, who works with all the students from East Central High School. As you may be aware, East Central ISD is a Palatol College, and also our sister college, St. Phillips College, have had a longstanding partnership, offering students the opportunity to earn college credit towards their post-secondary education while still in high school. Tonight, we're here to share a few of those successes that our East Central High School students have experienced as a result of those partnerships. During the 2021 academic year, 80 East Central ISD students were served through our dual-credit program with Palatol College, as well as Alamo Academies through St. Phillips College. Forty-one students took courses in Fall 2020, and another 40 took courses in Spring 21. While some of those students may be duplicated from fall to spring, East Central ISD students had a 90% passing rate within their college courses, which is higher than the rate of our native students at the college. So again, your students are actually performing better. Kudos to the East Central faculty and staff, along with the faculty and staff at the Alamo Colleges for the success of these students. Overall, Alamo Colleges District offers East Central ISD students 18 different course offerings. The senior class of 2021 earned on average 20.43 college credits, and that's a little bit, um, it's about approximately a year of college, right? So again, your students are doing very, very well. Through the partnership, over the last four years, East Central ISD students have earned a total of 664 credit hours and have saved an estimated $200,000 in tuition, which is an outstanding amount. So we're here today to not only celebrate that, but also celebrate the Alamo Promise Program as well, right? So every year, we have a friendly competition between all of the Alamo Promise High Schools, and the goal is to have 100% completion of the Alamo Promise Commitment Process. And so, um, our goal is to have 100% every year. Last year, East Central had approximately 79, 80%. This year, the number accomplished was 95%. So almost 100% of your senior classes are going to be eligible to receive completely tuition-free education at the Alamo Colleges. And so, with the Alamo Colleges, that's not only Palatol College, but our four sister colleges, over 300 programs of study, and it covers special tuition. And coming soon, for students who graduate, the seniors who come in this coming year, we're working on an initiative called Alamo Books, which will provide completely free textbooks for the students who come into the Alamo Colleges District. So again, we're looking, we're working hard to try and make it as affordable as possible. We really, really appreciate the partnership that we have with East Central, and we feel that it's through the support of the board, support of the superintendent, and then most importantly, support of the frontline folks, right? So Ms. Embry, Mrs. Lisaya, Mr. McKay, right? So we have some plaques here we'd like to provide to Ms. Embry. I don't know if Ms. Embry, I think Ms. Embry's not here today, but Ms. Lisaya is here. So we'd like to present that plaque to her. In addition to that, we have these two six-foot trophies right here that we would like to present as well. We have a six-foot trophy for Mr. McKay, and we have a six-foot trophy for Mr. Tiscano. He can put it on his dashboard, and he can, you know, have it on his truck, carry it around with him wherever he goes. But again, we wanted to say thank you very much, and we also have a certificate of appreciation from the Alamo Colleges that we'd like to present to you as well, just to say thank you for the partnership over all these years. Sharon, why don't you come on up, and we can present you with this plaque?
Thank you all so much, appreciate that. Alright, we'll move on to 6.3 Personnel Department Update, Mr. Scott.
This time, I'd like to call the Director of Personnel, Lieutenant Sanders, to provide the board an update on the progress that our Personnel Department has made this year. You can follow along with the slide deck, which is provided for you in your miscellaneous package. We'll follow that up with child nutrition and then ACPD as well. Miss Sanders?
Good evening, Mr. Massengill, Mr. Tiscano, members of the board. It's my honor to present to you this evening the Personnel Board Goal Update for 2122. So our first slide, for Priority One, Teaching and Learning Environment. The Personnel Department supported this priority by working within our department to create a culture of improving systems within the Personnel Department and cross-training our members in order to ensure that we provided a high level of customer service to all of our campuses and departments for the school year. So some of that cross-training included our frontline system, which helps our application system, and our onboarding system, so we, our ladies cross-train each other. That way, we can ensure that the efficiency of the department continued if any one of our members was missing. For Priority Two, High Performing and Engaged Workforce. We supported this priority by focusing on our hiring protocol this year, as well as our recruitment. So specifically for our hiring protocol, we wanted to ensure that we were refining our hiring protocol for our campuses and our departments, just to make sure everything was aligned and streamlined as we went through that process from application to onboarding, to actually having them come in and either sign contracts or letters of reasonable assurance. In the area of recruitment, post-COVID, during COVID, recruitment was difficult, as we weren't able to do any of that face-to-face, a lot of that was virtual, which was, which was interesting and a little bit of a struggle. But this year, during the spring, we actually went back to face-to-face recruitment. We had job fairs at universities, we had our own job fair in the spring, we plan on having one in June. So that definitely made our job a little bit easier with the recruitment piece, and we partnered with our campuses and our departments. And throughout the year, we attended a total of 16 job fairs, and those job fairs were to help staff our professional and auxiliary vacancies throughout the year. So another item that we've been working on this year, as well as last year, was our teacher incentive allotment. And really, this piece of work will really help us in the future as we look at recruitment and retention for our teachers. So it's something that we're going to continue to work on, we've worked on this year, we will continue to work on next year, and it will, again, assist us as we recruit and retain highly effective teachers in the future. Priority Three, Inclusive and Collaborative Partnerships. We've continued to partner with ESS, our substitute system. We continue to partner, of course, with frontline, that's our recruit and hire, application, and onboarding. A new partnership that we had this year was Handshake, and Handshake is assisting us with recruiting. And with that, this recruitment has allowed us to recruit across the country. We have been able to reach, in other states, individuals who may be wanting to relocate. So that's been a very effective system. So far, we've gotten some hits outside of the state of Texas. So we're looking forward to that continued partnership as we move on in the future. Priority Four, Resources and Operational Excellence. As always, we continue to maintain our personnel budget in order to ensure that we're being physically responsible. This year, as we began to see growth within the district, we became more intentional with staffing across the district. And so, this began mid-year with hiring staff to meet the needs of our campuses and to prepare for the following school year. So this spring, what we did to assist with staffing was we looked at pass-up projections, which you all have been very familiar with of late, and looking at that growth. And so, we've looked at that to help us staff for the next following year, for next year, and then we will continue to look at those projections as we continue over the next few years and anticipate the growth that we know is coming. So looking ahead, all of the bulletts here really have to do with recruitment and staffing over the next year. So again, TIA is going to assist with that recruitment piece and retention piece. We have a residency program coming, and a Grow Your Own program with our PERS. So the intent of that is to have individuals come into our district and to residency programs, rather than the traditional student teaching, they will be with us for a year, and the intent is to hire them after that. And the Grow Your Own is with our paraprofessionals. Get them to finish their schooling, the grant will help them pay for school, and again, to keep them here in the district. So again, just looking for more recruitment opportunities as we move forward, and then continuing with our staffing reviews every year, really throughout the year, to meet the needs of the growth in our district. So I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Those two, our, those two grants, that's amazing. I love that we recruit with them, so.
Sure, and, and those grants came from, uh, from TEA, and so they're holding a class, and it's just to support students in learning loss industries moving forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to 6.4 Child Nutrition Department Update, Mr. Scott.
Yes, so this time, I'd like to call the Child Nutrition staff up. See Ramona and Meredith coming up, to provide the board with an update on the progress that our Child Nutrition Department has made towards reaching their annuals measures. And supporting each of four priorities this year. Again, you can follow along in your electronic package, slide deck's also printed for you in the middle one here. Miss Ladys, Ben.
President Massengill, Mr. Tiscano, Board Trustees, I'm basically still honored to miss love to present this information to you, and I... Good evening. Alright, so are you going to click on me now?
Yes, I am.
Okay, okay. So, first off, I just want to start off by telling everybody that our theme for this year for our department has been growing in the right direction. And so, right along with that, our very first, I guess, um, hold on a second. My little slide deck is an operating record for me. Okay, so going along with that theme, our main focus for this year has been on employee growth and leadership. And so, in order to do that, number one, we've added additional professional trainings and learning opportunities to our already extensive list of things that we normally train on. We've tracked all of those trainings by each individual employee. All of our employees are now Food Analyst certified, all of our managers and our assistant managers are Food Manager certified. I was also certified by Service Safe about a month ago, so that going forward, we will no longer have to get our managers and assistant managers certified outside, from outside sources, I'm now certified to do that. In addition, we do have an ongoing training for all of our new hires, in addition to their orientation that we do. And then we also, which I'm most excited about, is at the Child Nutrition Office, we now have our own little training facility. It's only for about 25 or less, but it's been already instrumental in helping us with our manager meetings, and also with our new manager training that we're doing there in our office. Alright, so we're always aiming to have high-performing and engaged workforce. This year, however, our goal in that regards has been to improve the culture of our department. And so, the first thing we've done is encourage employee recognition by their peers, okay? So we actually have, not only their peers in the Child Nutrition Department, we even have some principals, et cetera, nominating people that they feel have been doing an outstanding job. We've spotlighted these employees on our new weekly newsletter. And then we also share these spotlights with the entire community through all of our social media outlets. In addition to that, we've also been more decorating of our lines, you know, before it was kind of hit or miss. Some people were really excited, some not so much. And so now, we kind of have a standard, like, we're all doing it, at least this, and then we can add to it. So that, the goal in that is number one, for customer service, and to make everything more inviting. We've actually increased our average daily participation by 25% just since August. So on inclusive and collaborative partnerships, we've been all about community engagement this year. Our department has partnered with many different community members to increase health and wellness and educational resources. In addition, we've made substantial social media presence with the help of our Child Nutrition Supervisor, Veronica. This has allowed us to showcase the already great things that our team members are doing and get it out there so people know, hey, you know, we're not just sliding lunches across the service observing line. Also, we've had community partners who have assisted us in providing free samples and some of the marketing tools that we do with these community events. We've actually doubled the amount of community events that we've done this year in comparison to last year. As far as our operational resources, we've always worked hard to be financially responsible. But now, we've kind of put a focus on not only our inventory management, but also our labor, and of course, generating that participation, which generates money. So we've done that by refocusing on the basics, employee coaching and retraining, cross-training our employees, incorporating new items into our menu, as well as updating old recipes. We've also improved our marketing and student engagement, and then reduced overtime for retrain, reduced overtime by retraining our employees so that they're more efficient. In conclusion, our mission has always been to basically be there and contribute to the success of ECISD and every single student by one, offering a nutritious meal that is well-balanced, and also to make sure it's done in a friendly and welcoming environment. Based on what we've done this year, we feel like that the Child Nutrition Department is growing in the right direction. And you'll see on that last slide, we have a few pictures there, one of which is just a picture of us receiving a grant. We've actually received multiple grants this year to assist us in providing more equipment for service, as well as some more equipment for actors, you know, new ovens and stuff like that. We also, another picture you see there is of course Ms. Mary Lou, our manager from Highland Forest, serving fresh kachis there. You see our team who are celebrating at the homecoming parade at the beginning of the year. Our op-press staff that was delivering meals while dressing up with the rest of their campus. And then the top right corner, I just want to point out one of our employees at Solado, who just last year was actually an ECISD student. She interned with us and now works with us in our department, so. Any questions?
How do you manage the cost of, the rising cost of everything?
Very carefully. We've really done a lot, honestly, Ms. Veronica and Ms. Catherine, who was our inventory and ordering clerk, have worked really hard in trying to make sure that the substitutions we have not only meet our extensive guidelines, but also are most cost-effective. We've also kind of reduced our paper, our paper costs in some areas, since we knew the food was going to be higher, then we tried to counter that in other areas. Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
I see why she needs to do it versus myself, since she's the expert. And I told Ramona, I was going to let y'all know that after twenty-six years in this district, I realized when you have a good thing, you don't mess it up. And so she had already done the presentation to our DLT team. I figured I'd let her write it on, if she could ask any jobs, I just want to live directly to do a great job.
All right, we will move on to six point five, ECPD department update.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I'd like to call Chief Drinowski up to the podium to provide the board with an update of progress the police department has made this year. Josh Kucher is accompanying him as well. And then, right after that, we'll also do a racial profiling report. Josh?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, President Massengill, Service Director Toscano, and members of the board. It is on behalf of myself and to be in the honor to be here tonight to share with you the essential PD in the year old continuous growth report. We have about an hour and a half of this presentation break. So for priority one, teaching and learning. This year, Essential Police Department has established a comprehensive case management, I'm sorry, comprehensive mentoring program. And within this program, we've, the police department has been able to mentor one hundred and twenty-five students, over a hundred and twenty-five students across the district. So what that consists of is our officers are meeting with students about behavior, attendance, choices and their goals. And it also is a way for them to increase the positive interaction with the police department and with law enforcement altogether. And at the same time, it gives the students an avenue, a different avenue for, or an outlet for when they are faced with different challenges. We have also implemented trackers to be able to track our students that are in this program and able to keep the data, which is also a part of our key performance indicators. In this, some of our campuses are doing a little bit more and offering challenges for them. So after they complete the program, they are issued a challenge coin.
So, board members, I've given each one of you a challenge coin. And real quick, the law enforcement, and I believe in the military also, we've given out to officers, soldiers, as a challenge to succeed in their training and their everyday lives, right? So what we're doing with our kiddos here is, we're identifying kids that really need mentoring. We all have good kids, we have good kids here, but there's some that just need to grow. So Highland Forest, the greatest year, started with one of our first challenge coin schools. The officer went ahead and bought these coins all as his own expense. And we graduated the class and each one of them got his challenge coin, just in the face of these kids. So we promote, continue to mentoring, grew their careers hopefully at Essential. And we tell them, hey, one of these days I'm going to come up to you with your challenge coin. And ask you for your challenge coin. So that's how we keep up and we track how our students are doing once they move on, do their careers.
Thank you. So for priority two, a performing and engaged workforce, the EC police department has developed three procedures aligned with the district guidelines. And these procedures are also aligned with the Texas best practices for law enforcement, which we'll get into in the next few slides. We've also implemented systems to ensure alignment across the district for the safety audits and district safety plans, which are, which has been a success this year because, or has been beneficial to us because our next reporting year is going to be twenty-three. So it's only required three, every three years, but we do it every year just to stay along top of it.
So every officer is assisting the campus administration in our security and safety audits. We all remember by all, we had to do it every three years, and you see one or two persons were due to be audited. Well, now every officer on the campus is participating with the administrators, working together to make sure we're, I just follow the law, while we're having a good safety security system for our kids and staff. And of course, engaging workforce. Everything's everybody's job on the campus and district, from picking up the pieces of paper to mentoring kids. So that's how our officers follow the daily routines. I just mentoring, I just provide safety security. We got to take out a bag in the trash, we're going to take out that trash, just on that. We're going to get involved with everybody's job on that campus. That's how we operate.
And change type.
And change type. We provide that service.
And drop snakes.
Oh, drop snakes.
Yes, and snakes.
For priority three, inclusive and collaborative partnership. Again, Essential, the police department provides safety and security for every district event and provides top-down services to our students, community and staff at ECISD. The police department contributes to family engagement with community events, such as giving safety tips to parents via social media or...
Or guidance about weather conditions that are going to occur within the district to help provide a safety route to attend school. And also, because our last major event we had was on COVID. Because then we had COVID. So we have not been able to gather and have a major event like that. But coming twenty-two, twenty-three, we're going to COVID. We've got some Halloween stuff that we're going to do, so we got some great ideas by my staff and our administrators working together to plan on having more events, which I call post-COVID attack. So that's how we're going forward with our educational programs. Of course, we provide safety and security on every event that occurs. Any event, football game, basketball game, any campus, we'll see at least one of those.
And priority four, our last priority. Is resources and operational excellence, the law enforcement best practices recognition program.
So the Texas best practices recognition, and I know I kind of spoke a little about it last year. This is a big thing for us, okay? It means that the Texas Police Chiefs Association, who guides and sets the guidelines for certain requirements of police agencies, not just groups, municipalities, universities, need to follow almost a hundred and seventy-one guidelines and make sure that you're following each one. It starts from financial responsibility, training, and it just keeps going on and on and on. So we're in the process of meeting those requirements right now. It's a two-year program that we have to meet. We're going to get audited, hopefully next year. We're trying to get recognized before the two-year timeline. And what that does, it tells people after that, Essential Police Department is following guidelines set by not just, not just the national level, but the state level on law enforcement, which right now, in the times that we are in, is very important. We have the training, we have, following the training set forward, following the guidelines, following the racial profile, which we'll talk the next one. So we're in with the best practice guidelines. Attorneys see that, right? Oh, no, they're part of Texas best practice, well, we got it together, okay? So we're excited about it. We will be the first school district police department in very county to get that recognition. If we get it, and I guarantee you, we will get it. The second thing that we got is we applied to the, we applied to the state T-CLO, Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, which is our state regulatory for law enforcement all over state Texas. We applied, we submitted our paperwork to become a law enforcement academy. We got approved, and I'm proud to say that we went up to Austin, we got our approval. So we are now the contractual law enforcement training academy. What does that mean? That means that we have instructors that can train our own officers, and we can report that training to the state. Instead of me or the district creating other law enforcement academies to train my officers to fulfill mandated training. The other thing is, we can customize our training to fill the needs of our police department. Mental health, autism with kids, those kinds of stuff that we deal on a daily basis that some of the city and universities don't deal with. We're excited, and we're the first in very county ISPDs to have that. And we're number eight in state of Texas ISPDs to have that recognition, I mean that standing within the states. It's going to improve the quality of our officers, it's going to improve the financial responsibility requirement we don't have to pay. And we can train other law enforcement agencies that pay us, okay? So, and we customize it. So we're so excited about that. Go ahead, Josh.
And that's a huge recognition, having, being able to have your own academy, being able to train your own officers. There's going to be other districts, certainly, that are going to reach out to us and will be able to make some revenue.
They already have to, they're excused.
So in conclusion, we're going to continue to collaborate with the district personnel and provide the best customer service experience with fidelity. And we're going to focus on putting, continue putting our students first and doing what's in the best interest of our students.
Well, any questions?
Oh, back on priority one, it says teach, learn environment and mentoring, about being successful and stuff. When I see this Dallas Cowboy thing here, can you play that movie? How that goes along with mentoring and teaching.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I will definitely explain that to you, I'll do it real quick. Is for the last twenty-seven years, I've been saving my hour Super Bowl, right? Okay, right, exactly. So this is why I try and tell the kids, always wish, before the start, never change.
Looking for clarification on that.
Well, I tried to get that picture up in Jerry's world. But thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Massengill.
And that's all we have, and Chief is going to do his racial profiling report.
Any other questions?
Six point six, ECPD racial profiling report, Ms. Toscano.
All right, Chief.
Board members, Mr. Toscano, this is our yearly report that has to be done before government board, which is y'all, according to Article two point one three three, according to current procedures. And basically, this report is to provide you with the information of how much interaction your police department has had with the public and what kind of interaction and with who and whom. So for January first of twenty, twenty, twenty-two, twenty twenty-one to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one, because we're in twenty-two. The police department had a total of seven traffic stops. So those seven traffic stops consist of speeding in school zones, passing school buses, reckless driving, just overall speeding, any other infraction of the Texas traffic laws within our schools or close by our schools, or some kind of action that might affect your schools. Out of those seven traffic stops, four were Hispanic and three were white. Six were males, two of them being white, and four of them being Hispanic. One of them was a female, and she was white. Out of those seven stops, five warning tickets were issued and two real citations were issued. And I am honored to say that we had no complaints on racial profiling by your police department. We're again, for another, happy to answer any questions.
Good job, Captain. Thank you all so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to six point seven, upcoming events, Mr. Toscano.
Trustees in your, Ms. Lanespin's packet, just wanted to call your attention to a couple items in May and June. In May, on the twenty-fifth, we have graduation rehearsal at the Almond Dome from eight to ten AM, as well as graduation on the twenty-eighth, nine A at the Almond Dome. Mr. McCann, his team in the nice paper bags, look like this. Inside of that, you've got a vanilla folder that's going to have all the information you need. It has your parking pass, it's going to have detailed itinerary information. If you need any additional information about graduation, reach out to Cambry, we'll get you whatever you need. I know that also actually circulated the list of graduates so that you guys can kind of inspect that and coordinate the groups that you'll be handing diplomas to, as well as any other students that are customized there. In June, on the seventh, I believe, Mr. Massengill, I have an announcement about a special meeting.
Just these, June seventh, we're going to have a special meeting, a goal-setting meeting, and also the, re-listening, the RAC committee findings. And so we vote on that and look at that. So it'd be on June seventh, I believe at five-thirty at the student centers, student service centers over here next to the football field, right? So June seventh at five-thirty.
Also, the week of the seventh, the district will, again, four-day work weeks through the month of June and July. The summer leadership institute is at the Marriott River Center, the fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth and eighteenth. I believe five of you have registered for that. And if you need any additional information about that, please touch base with Cambry. And your next regularly scheduled board meeting is on June sixteenth at six-thirty. At this time scheduled in the boardroom, keep in mind that the boardroom is going through some renovations. We do expect it to be done by June sixteenth, but if something were to change, we'll give you a clear notice in advance of that meeting. Be happy to answer any questions, if we have about any of those items in the calendar for May and June.
All right, we will move on to the action agenda items. Seven point one, proposals for asphalt replacement at Central Office Parking Lot, Mr. Toscano.
Sir, Mr. President, trustees, the district had requested proposals for pavement rehabilitation at Central Office Parking Lot. As the board previously approved us to move forward with that. But this time, I'd like to call John Thomas up, our Director of Maintenance and Facility Management, to provide the board an overview of the bids we received and a summary of the tabulation, as well as a recommendation moving forward. In your Ms. Lanespin's packet, you have the tabulation sheet and a handout to follow along. Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Toscano, Mr. Massengill, members of the board. In evaluating some of the pavement around the district, it was determined the central section at Central Office needed to be addressed, so we're looking at doing a rehab project there over this summer. We've engaged CBS Murray to move forward on that to help us do evaluations and some of the construction design. Based upon that, we put out proposals, we received three proposals. You'll see in your packet, the proposals themselves. Based upon that evaluation, we're recommending Albright Construction. Is there any questions?
Have we worked with Albright Constructors before?
No, sir.
Huh?
No, sir.
Who we worked with before?
So the other two that we received, we have worked with both of them before. You'll see there's a significant difference in the pricing. So we went back and vetted Albright with some of the past work that they've done. And they've worked for some of the colleges in the area, the college districts, as well as some very large retail. And they all gave them a thumbs up that they did. as some very large retail, and they all gave them a thumbs up that they did very good work.
Yeah, there's a considerable amount of difference between their proposals and the other two.
Yes, sir.
They left a lot of money on the table, either that or...
That, that was our concern at the time, and then we went back with CDS Murray to evaluate that.
Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the proposal for pavement rehabilitation at Central Office at the parking lot to Albright Construction of Texas Incorporated.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the proposal for pavement rehabilitation at Central Office Parking Lot to Albright Constructors of Texas Incorporated. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Mr. Victor Garza, who has a second. I have a second from Ginger Freezehaw, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to consent agenda. Is there anyone that would like anything full from the consent agenda? All right, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, ask for a present. I have a motion from Mr. Victor Garza, who has a second. I have a second from Ginger Freezehaw, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries. We will move to adjournment, all in favor? Oppose, we are done.